Good evening and welcome to St. Lucie County School Board's regular board meeting this evening. Welcome to everyone that is in attendance, and thank you so much for hearing the gravel. All right, at this time, we will stand for our pledge of allegiance and directly after our Kids at Home pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. As an adult treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated. Okay, as you can see, we have Dr. Prince here, our deputy superintendent, soon to be our next superintendent, but he is in the place, standing in the place, or sitting in the place, of Mr. Wayne Gent, who is just feeling a little under the weather this evening. So at this time, we're going to ask Dr. Prince if you would please give us our special order of business.
Dr. Mills, I'll turn it over to Ms. Martin for our special order of business. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. Dr. Prince, at this time, I would like to invite some very special guests to the podium. Donald Myers, the regional manager of school and district development for Cambridge International, along with Allison Ibarra, school development manager, to the podium to make their presentation.
Superintendent Gent couldn't be here, but best wishes to him as well. Deputy Superintendent Prince, Chief Academic Officer Dr. Wild, and our board members, Dr. Mills, Mr. Ingersoll, Ms. Hawley, Mr. Kelly, and Ms. Richardson. Thank you for allowing us to be here with you to celebrate today. We're here because we would like to present an honor to St. Lucie School District for their hard work. As some of you may have heard Allison address in the reception, we are awarding St. Lucie Public Schools the Cambridge International Districts of the Year in the medium district category for 21 and 22. It's starting to become a bit of a dynasty. This is the second time you guys have won it in a couple of years, so all the other districts better start watching out. We started the partnership with St. Lucie in 2007, having the first Cambridge International School with Treasure Coast High School. And now we are partnering with 10 schools, yes, Treasure Coast is here, with 10 schools in your district. As you know, every year Cambridge International honors three exceptional districts across the U.S. in large, medium, and small districts. Within each category, we recognize the district that ranks the highest in these categories: increasing access to rigorous Cambridge curriculum, sustaining or improving student performance on exams, and three, committing to equity and education for all students. And as you could tell by your pledge that you started with this, this is at the heart of what you guys want to do here in St. Lucie County. Since 2018 and '19, your district has expanded access to Cambridge International exams by 6%, continuing to provide a breadth of Cambridge course offerings to high schools in your district. Your students continue to achieve high pass rates, on Cambridge exams as well, averaging 78% in 2020, 2021. With increasing numbers, it's always very difficult to maintain excellence. And I think that's one of the most impressive things about what the teachers and students and administrators in St. Lucie County have done. To maintain a level of excellence while expanding access is truly admirable. And we would like to honor that and appreciate the work that all the teachers and students have done. Cambridge values five learner and teacher attributes. We look for students and teachers to be confident, responsible, reflective, innovative, and engaged. Skills that we believe will help students and teachers continue to grow in the years that come. I also want to congratulate you on another special thing. 91 of your students received outstanding Cambridge learner awards. This means that they achieved high passing scores on a minimum of three tests in the same year. So 91 students here achieved that award, which is quite incredible. I'd like to close by once again saying congratulations. Your team is brilliant, dedicated, and daring, because they did this during the years of the pandemic. Your students and your teachers gracefully handled the situation, and we know, as the people who sent all these exams to them, that it wasn't easy. So we really appreciate the grace with which they dealt with that. So we look forward to working with you in new ways and continue to work with you as you grow and we grow across this country. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite the board members to come down if you would like to join us, and then remain down here as we have a number of awards to give out this evening. And at this time, I'd like to invite the principals of the A schools to come up to the front as well. Are there any principals here? I see them. Come on up, guys. And school representatives, get ready, because we're going to call you up by school as well in just a minute. And then if you guys can stay, let's have centennial principal and centennial representatives, if there's any in the audience, will have you come forward. And then if I can have the other principals just step to the side for just a moment. Everyone left, but we'd still like to get a picture with the principal, so we'll have you go right there as well. There you go. We can have Fort Pierce Central, Ms. Buchanan. Any representatives from Fort Pierce Central?
Let's go.
Let's go. Next, we're going to do Treasure Coast, so be ready, Treasure Coast. Okay, Treasure Coast High School principal, Todd Smith, along with staff members. I see a lot of other Treasure Coast staff members. Okay, and then last but certainly not least, Principal Joe Lazo, Westwood Fort Pierce Magnet School, and Westwood staff. Got somebody coming forward here. We can just, we'll have to put the plaque back over there, and we will move right along. And at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry forward, who will now recognize the Dr. Samuel S. Gaines Essay Contest winners.
Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Prince, the Dr. Samuel S. Gaines African-American Essay Contest is part of St. Lucie Public Schools' celebration of African-American history. The contest is named for a true educational pioneer who served the children of St. Lucie County and worked for the educational community for 34-plus years. This essay is part of the district's recognition and celebration of African-American History Month, and is a wonderful way to help students prepare for FSA rights, which they recently finished, for scholarships, and college applications. Mr. Brian Garcia of Remnant Construction has been our premier sponsor for this contest since its inception. Representing Remnant Construction tonight and joining us is Mr. is Brian Noble, who is also a major supporter and friend of St. Lucie Public Schools. Mr. Noble. Our elementary winners, in third place, from Manatee Elementary, Harrison Weber. Second place, from Francis K. Sweet, Alexandria Frazier. And from Morningside Elementary, 4th grader Brianna Wallace, our first-place winner. In middle school, our third-place winner from Lincoln Park Academy, Gossel Estrada. Second place, from Lincoln Park Academy, Sidney Daniel. And our first-place winner from Samuel Gaines Academy, 8th grader Franz Pierre Louise. And our high school winners, third place goes Genia Minho from Fort Pierce Westwood
At this time, I'd like to invite Heather Clark, Director of Student Services, to the
Second place, Xavier Swearing from Fort Pierce Central High School. And our first-place winner from Lincoln Park Academy, 10th grader Latitia Nolasco. While we're taking a picture, if we have any parents of these awesome writers in the
podium for our next recognition.
audience, would you please stand and be recognized at this time?
Lot of celebrations this evening.
Thank you, parents, and if you need to come closer for a photo op, parents, we can do
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Deputy Superintendent Prince.
that as well. We're ready for our photo op? One second.
We're pleased to come before you. Here she is. We're pleased to come before you this evening to recognize Ms. George Anne Gregora, Health Services Coordinator for St. Lucie Public Schools. George Anne was recently honored at the 2022 Florida School Health Association Conference as School Nurse of the Year. That definitely deserves applause, given our circumstances the past couple of years. She was nominated by her colleagues for the many years of exceptional health services that she has provided to students and their families. George Anne is impeccable in her work and has made such a positive impact in our schools and our community. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Gregora.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Helen Wild, Chief Academic Officer, who will share information with you about our SWEL graduates.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Deputy Superintendent Prince. I am thrilled to be here tonight to recognize some very determined and caring educators. As you know, St. Lucie Public Schools was the proud recipient of a $1.7 million federal grant, the largest one awarded in that particular year, to support mental health of our students in our schools. At that time, we partnered with Florida Atlantic University to develop a unique personalized master's degree program in counselor education to be able to recruit 75 future counselors to serve our students in the years going forward. At this time, we are honored to recognize the first cohort of 25 graduates who received their master's in counselor education on May 5th, and who are here tonight to be recognized. And before we ask them to stand and be recognized and then come up for a photo, I would like to ask some special individuals who support that program to please stand and be recognized. The first is a professor of counselor education at Florida Atlantic University, a leading institution in counselor education, and a leader in the state, our friend, Dr. Elizabeth Valores. Also, April Minsey, who was instrumental in writing the grant and is the grant coordinator. Also, Nikki Poole, who is our coordinator of secondary counseling and guidance. And also, Ms. Diane White, who is a retired school guidance director and currently is an advisor for the candidates in the SWEL program. So at this time, I'm going to ask all of the graduates that are here with us tonight to please stand and be recognized. Claudia Aguilar, Lisa Bailey, Brittany Baldwin, Elizabeth Bernard. Okay, you can come on up as you stand, because we're going to do a picture. Please bring your certificates with you. Wendy Bayless-Nada, Heather Cannon, Dominique Cesar, Lilias Damontinog, didn't say that right, Christine Derry, Gregory Dorstelia, Barbara Eugene Pierre, Marcia Griffin, Jeanette Hernandez, Kristen Sue, Jeanette Jerome, Jamie Mazo, Juliette Murray, Irene Ruiz, Shida Seleki, Thomas Share, Michael Solomon, Rachel Sparks, Keviet Stubbs, Jamie Vermillion, and Jennifer Votino. Please give them a big round of applause. They are all now certified school counselors, serving the students of St. Lucie Public Schools. Congratulations.
Health Services, who will share information with you about Mental Health Awareness Month.
Madam Chair, board members, Deputy Superintendent Prince, I am very pleased to introduce tonight Mrs. Desiree Thomas, who's one of our outstanding school social workers, and she is here with one of her students from Fort Pierce Central High School, Fatima Fernandez-Garcia. And Fatima is going to read our mental health proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month.
Whereas, mental health isn't essential to everyone, overall health and well-being. Whereas, many people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. Whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce and burn mental health conditions. Whereas, there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. Whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our community. Whereas, with early and effective treatment, those individuals' mental health conditions can recover and lead through productive lives. Whereas, each business, school, government, agencies, healthcare providers, organizations, and citizens share their burdened mental health conditions and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Gent, you have heard the proclamation. We are now asking that that board has signed it the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
I ask the board to approve the proclamation.
At this time, I'd like to move forward with our star words. I do know that we have one individual here, so if you wouldn't mind staying for just a few more moments. The first trio, Mallory Hayes, Kyle Herk, Timothy Maple, from the Maintenance Department. These individuals were nominated by Susan Carver, who is the Director of Risk Management and Employee Benefits. A few months ago, this trio took immediate action when a fire that was sparked by a blade grinder broke out in the warehouse. They grabbed the fire extinguisher to quickly put out the flames. Their actions saved other equipment and supplies that were being stored close by, saving the district from a much larger loss. So congratulations to these three individuals. Are any of these individuals here? Okay, we'll make sure we get them their award. Moving on, we have Deborah Sosby from the Transportation Department. She was nominated by Alicia Seitz, our Director of CTE. Deborah has been instrumental and goes above and beyond to make sure that transportation is arranged for the various CTE events. This greatly benefits the students participating in their career exploration opportunities. So thank you and congratulations, Deborah. Next, we have Rebecca Richards, who is a 6th grade teacher at Southern Oaks Middle School. She was nominated by Principal Dr. Leslie. Ms. Richards graciously volunteered to provide daily small group instruction to all 6th grade ELA students who lost ground during the pandemic. Because of her support, those students have made up that lost ground and are making significant gains. She is truly a selfless educator and deserves to be recognized. So congratulations and thank you, Ms. Richards. We have Lilia Nidel, who is an MTSS Support Specialist, and she was nominated by the intern principal at CAST, Dr. Megan Green. She states that Lilia has been phenomenal in helping their students in the absence of their school counselor. Anytime support was needed for counseling services, PSAT, and 504 meetings, she always made herself available to assist. She certainly goes above and beyond to support the students at CAST. So congratulations, Ms. Nidel. Is she here? Okay, great, I thought she was. Just a moment, let me get her. There you go. Okay, we'll get a picture? Next, we have Stephanie Smith-Martin, who is the Data Specialist at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. She was nominated by Mara Ayala, the Executive Secretary. Stephanie is going above and beyond by helping to cover the front desk when the school's clerk had to take an unexpected leave. She arrives at work very early, 5:30 a.m., to ensure that her data specialist duties are taken care of, then she greets the teachers as they arrive. She does all of this with a positive attitude. Congratulations to Stephanie, thank you for all that you do. Is she here? Okay, she is not. And last but certainly not least, we have Charles Frazier, a teacher at Fort Pierce Central High School, and he was nominated by Dr. Kevin Perry. Dr. Perry wanted to recognize Mr. Frazier with this award because of the support that he has provided to the district with the HBCU/HSI College Fair every year. He uses his personal connections with college presidents and campus administration in schools, specifically in Georgia and Virginia. All of this benefiting our students by providing them with scholarship opportunities. Thank you very much, Charles, congratulations. And I believe he is here. Just a moment, Charles. Mr. Frazier. And that concludes our special orders, along with our star words. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving right along. Congratulations to so many people this evening that have been recognized for your service and your diligence to be a blessing to our children and to our Saint Lucy County Public Schools. Okay, we're gonna, we're at the EESL report. I did get a call from our President of the EESL, the Teachers' Union, and he will not be in today. He's a little under the weather as well. And CWA report, I don't think I see Ms. Vickers out there. Is there anyone here to represent CWA? Okay, we move right along, and we're going to have our Youth Advisory Council. Christian Backer, would you please come forward and give us your report? And welcome, Christian.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Schoolboard Members, and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince. As we're near the end of the Youth Advisory Council's first year, I am joined here today by a few of our council members from across the county. So I could be missing a few members, but Tyler Daniels from Lincoln Park Academy, could you please stand and be recognized? Catherine Pinto, a junior from Lincoln Park Academy. And our Secretary, Erica Mormon, Treasure Coast High School. So I cannot have been more thankful to have such qualified and passionate student leaders over the past year. They have made me a better chairman and have made the school district better through their input and suggestions. These members have not just been active within the Youth Advisory Council, but have also served on the District Advisory Council and their respective school advisory councils. And interestingly, many of these members are the first students to ever serve in these positions. Over the past year, our council has accomplished a great deal. Our accomplishments include championing the inclusion of water bottle refilling stations within our district budget, which was led by Tyler Daniel, interviewing and recommending the appointment of Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince as the next superintendent of schools, and advocating for previously unheard-of issues such as student access to college application fee waivers. Most importantly, our council has elevated students as participants in the assessment of district-wide needs. We have created a line of communication between district administration and the student body. We have been critical of district proceedings from a student perspective and have asked previously unconsidered questions regarding transportation, communication, and curriculum. We have truly advocated on behalf of the 41,000 students here in the Saint Lucy Public School District. Once again, this would not have been possible were it not for the relentless efforts of our council members and the tireless support of our adult sponsors, including Mr. Mayo and Ms. Holly. In our last meeting, our council members navigated the new bills passed by the Florida Legislature and explored how to implement meaningful mental health resources while adhering to the bill's pass. Furthermore, our council intends on exploring an online communication mean to allow middle and elementary school students to submit ongoing student concerns within their schools. Our final meeting will be on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, and will be held at Treasure Coast High School in the very room where the idea for this council was first conceptualized, Mr. Mayo's classroom. While next year, while next meeting will mark the end of my tenure as chairman, many of our council juniors members will return next year to serve for their senior year. We expect to welcome our 2022 to 2023 Youth Advisory Council cohort in September. Lastly, on behalf of the Youth Advisory Council, we would like to congratulate over the 3,000 students who will be graduating from the Saint Lucy Public School District in the coming weeks. We have collectively endured unimaginable political, social, and economic obstacles throughout our academic careers and have persevered nonetheless. Wherever life may take you, congratulations. I look forward to addressing you all one last time as Chairman of the Youth Advisory Council at the June School Board Meeting, and as always, thank you, and I look forward to the possibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Backer. Moving along, we come next to our Consent Agenda. May I please have a motion and a second to adopt the Consent Agenda as presented?
Second.
So moved, Mr. Ingersoll, second, Mr. Kelly, all in favor. Oh, no, we're not, we don't have to go there yet. What we're going to do next is ask our Superintendent for his recommendation to approve the Consent Agenda items.
I recommend the Board approve the Consent Agenda items as submitted.
Board, Dr. Prince has recommended that we approve these items. Are there any items on the agenda that you would like to have pulled for discussion? Seeing none, we will move forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion then carries five zero. Okay, we have our informational reports before each Board Member. You have those reports in front of you. These reports do not need any votes, no approvals necessary. It is solely to demonstrate us being in compliance with the state statute 1002.33. And that is just for informational only, for our financial reports for charter schools. Superintendent Dr. Prince, can we please have your staff reports?
Yeah, I'm very excited. Tonight on the HR Agenda, we have a promotion that I'm very excited to announce. Ms. Mona Rae Miller Buchanan is here tonight as our new Executive Director of Schools, and I can't, go ahead, thank you. She really dignifies her position, and she is a great representative of Saint Lucy County Public Schools, has been a principal in a number of locations, and just exemplifies all we're about as leadership. And I'd ask her, before I continue with my report, ask Ms. Mona Rae to speak. Thank you, Mona.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members, Deputy Superintendent Prince, and I know Mr. Gent's not here, Superintendent Gent. I am truly humbled to serve as one of the Directors of Schools and further support the leaders, staff, and students in Saint Lucy County. Thank you, Dr. Prince and Mr. Gent, for prioritizing building effective relationships and allowing leaders to have a voice as we advocate for our students and staff. Mr. Gent, you have paved the way for so many of us, and I am honored to have worked with you and for you. I know he's not here, but. My supervisors, Dan Frank and Adrian Ocampo, you always supported and shared your expertise with me. You challenged me and guided me the last five years, and I am very thankful. I began my journey at Treasure Coast High School in 2006 from New York City. I was hired as a ninth-grade counselor working side by side with my mentor, Diane White. My first principal was Dr. Wild. She inspired us at, I went to so many schools, at Treasure Coast High School, where we created, implemented, and sustained a positive culture and climate. Thank you, Dr. Wild, and Treasure Coast High School staff. Then I moved on to Fort Pierce Westwood and became a Panther. The Panther family welcomed this Titan for four years and caused me to change my path from a school counselor to wanting to be a principal. My Panther students, who called me Ma or Miss B, and many who remain in my life today, you taught me how important it is to be a positive role model and love unconditionally. Subsequently, I spread my wings, and my Assistant Principal under the leadership, and I became Assistant Principal under the leadership of Principal Popwell and the tutelage of Assistant Principal Kim Wah. Those were three amazing years, years of growth and building relationships. Thank you, Principal Popwell in Centennial High School. My first principal role was at Forest Grove Middle School. I now became a Bulldog. So if you're doing the math, I was a Titan, then a Panther, then an Eagle. Now I'm a Bulldog right now. Well, not right now, later. We demonstrated that effective teamwork yields overall success. My AP Terry Saxon, we worked closely together with the Bulldog family, and after two years, we were a B-school. Presently, as a member, and I say member because I'm a family member, of Fort Pierce Central High School, I am now a Cobra. I am proud and truly grateful to serve the staff at Fort Pierce Central High School. My admin team, Boria, Baylor, Saminsky, Davenport, and Santoro, I know we went through the toughest time together. My staff, and I mean everyone, teachers, clerical, custodian, everyone who works at Fort Pierce Central High School, we made it through the most difficult period in educational history together. We formed relationships built on trust. We encouraged and embraced each other, and we continue to excel despite all the obstacles. Thank you for remaining steadfast and optimistic, demonstrating that Cobra pride is real. Once a Cobra, you are always a Cobra. Now, my immediate family, my husband, Alton, aka Sean, you are my best friend, and you are my rock. Thanks for not complaining when the workday never ends. My three shining stars, Alex, who is at the University of Miami right now, Ashley and Aleah, who are here today, thanks for understanding how important it is for me to do what I am passionate about. Lastly, my parents, my mom who just passed, they sacrificed everything for us as we migrated to this country in 1995. The odds were often against us, but God had a plan. Indeed, I will work daily to make my parents and everyone that has entrusted me with this new task, I will ensure that you are proud. I pledge to always make a difference and work zealously to be an agent of change. Thank you for this opportunity.
Mona, do you have any family out there? Do you want to introduce?
My husband is here, and my two daughters. And thank you, admin team, for coming over.
Thank you. Thank you, Mona. I just wanted to also say, Mona, that while you were giving your comments, Mr. Gent texted me and said he is watching, and he appreciates the kind words. All right, thank you.
I knew he was watching.
Yes. So I'd also like to add a couple of things in my comments with regards to the Cambridge District of the Year. This is the second time in three years that we are the Cambridge District of the Year, and that is a huge accomplishment. And that's a credit to the high school principals that are here, because as a former high school principal, you know, one of the responsibilities that we all have is to provide access to college and career courses for our students, and that's what those Cambridge courses are all about. As a son that just graduated last year with a Cambridge diploma, providing opportunities for our kids is what it's all about. Principals, the ones that are still here, please thank your staffs on Mr. Gent's behalf for being here and also being with us during that celebration. With that being said, is we're creating first-generation college students. In just a few weeks, we have our graduation ceremonies. It's up on the board dais, starting on the 24th, which is Tuesday. We've got Saint Lucy West Centennial at 8 o'clock, Lincoln Park at 11 o'clock, and then the very next day, we've got Fort Pierce Central High School, followed by Port Saint Lucy High School. And then the following Thursday, or the next Thursday, we've got Treasure Coast High School, Fort Pierce Central, and then on June 8th, we have our alternative sites. I just wanted to say, just consider this, our Conference of High School, our graduation rates are 99%. That is unbelievable. And as a district, our graduation rate is 95%, and we will continue that excellence into next year. Couple of other remarks. Our students continue to test. We are finishing up our FSA testing. It finished for elementary, ELA, and math last week, and now our students are, our secondary students are doing computer-based assessments. That is all going very well. I will say, a young lady in my household took the seventh-grade FSA math today, and all word is that she did well, or at least she thinks she did well, and she'll complete the second half tomorrow. I want to wish all of our students good luck, because I know high-stakes testing can be stressful. And I also like to add that at our last Board Workshop, there was kind of a consensus amongst the Board, and it was, it was important to me, as the new Superintendent, starting in July, that we, that we start the year off with a retreat, and that is kind of customary when you have a new Superintendent or new Board Members. I did reach out to our Board Chair, and I want to thank Dr. Mills publicly for, for working with the School Boards Association to make that happen, hoping in July. And the last thing I wanted to say is that as part of my world tour as the incoming Superintendent, I've been visiting every single school and every single principal in our district and talking to the faculties. And I just wanted to say, and I know I've said publicly thank you to Mr. Gent. Mr. Gent has only missed a couple of meetings in his seven years as the Superintendent, but he may have missed only a couple of meetings, but he has established a culture that has resonated in our schools. And I can't tell you how encouraged I am as the new incoming Superintendent. As I go out and I meet teachers and support staff and all kinds of employees that we have, that although, you know, we hear that this is such a stressful time for our employees, I was greeted with smiling faces and welcoming personalities and having critical conversations with things that are important to our employees, and I just wanted to say thank you to those employees that participate. And I also wanted to say thank you, Mr. Gent, and get well soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Prince, as well. Board Members, the potential date for that training is July 26, I believe. We are still waiting to get confirmation from FSBA. If indeed that is a conflict to your schedule, please just let me know later, not right now, but later. You let me know, and we'll try to reschedule that, okay? Okay. Attorney Shadak, do you have any report?
Thank you, Chairwoman, members of the Board, and Deputy Superintendent. There is no attorney's report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shadak. Okay, School Board Members, before you give your report, we do have a proposed adoption of resolution for the referendum election to continue the levy of millage for operational needs for the school district. The Superintendent has recommended that we adopt this resolution. It will determine, and if we have any revisions, we could do that as well, but he is asking us tonight to adopt that resolution. And it will be to approve the continuation of the levying of that 1.00 mill for operational needs for the school district. The description is that there's four things this resolution would do. Number one, it would make certain that findings and determinations explaining why the operational need millage is needed. Number two, the resolution would provide for continuing the levy of the millage for operational needs of the district for four years. Number three, it would direct the Board of County Commissioners to call a referendum election on the continuation of the operational needs. And it will also authorize appropriate notice of the referendum election, make certain provisions for, and require determinations regarding the referendum election. Number six, it would adopt the form of the ballot for the referendum. Voters needed for that Superintendent's recommendation to adopt this resolution. We would ask the Deputy Superintendent if he would make that recommendation in behalf of the Superintendent.
I recommend the Board adopt the resolution, which such revisions, as the Board determines appropriate for a referendum election, determine if electors approve the continuation of levying 1.0 mill for operational needs of the school district as submitted and attached to the agenda.
I will entertain a motion in a second.
So moved, Madam Chair.
So moved by Mr. Kelly and second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries five zero. And then the next agenda item that we have is the out-of-district travel request for me and Ms. Harley and myself to attend the FSBA FADSS Annual Summer Conference. Usually, Ms. Harley and myself go each year, and this is the summer part of their conference. We are asking to the Board to approve our attending. We're requesting that. But before we do that, we need to have an open public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that would like to comment to us attending this particular out-of-district travel. Seeing that there's no one, we are asking to the Board to please vote on our ability to be able to be reimbursed for our expenses. This is a part of state standards, and Section 1001.39 is where we would be allowed to go and be reimbursed for our travel expenses. Board Members, can we have a motion? So moved, Mr. Ingersoll. So moved, Mr. Ingasol?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. This carries 5-0. Okay, at this time, we want our board members to report, and we will start out with Mr. Ingasol, and just go straight over, all the way across.
Sure thing. This is our last school board meeting before the end of school, so I want to thank all the teachers, administrators, support staff, and particularly Mr. Gent that's watching. It's been a incredible year, and we want to thank everyone, particularly the parents, teachers, I mean, parents and students, too. Coming back from a COVID year and being a fully functional school district has been exciting, to see the arts back, to see football games, and the whole gamut. And it's just good to be back in a normal school setting. I went to, speaking about arts, I went to Central's plays, The Addams Family, and Central did a phenomenal job, and wanted to thank the school for that. And then lastly, Port St. Lucy High School, or not Port St. Lucy, the summer program for the district is going to be held at Port St. Lucy High School, and the Grease tickets are almost all sold out. So if you don't have your tickets, please pick up your tickets for the play Grease, and it's like the second weekend in June.
Thank you, Ms. Ingasol. Ms. Harley? Mr. Kelly?
I know, Mr. Ingasol said everything I was going to say. He does that. But I do have a question, if I could ask quickly, Dr. Prince. My ear, I couldn't hear. What was that, about 99% under your?
Our comprehensive high school graduation rate is 99%, Mr. Kelly.
And one other, there was another thing you had mentioned about being 7th out of 67?
7th out of 67 counties, that's our rank.
And that award also that we got tonight, I, sometimes I'm old, I can't hear good. That award from the Cambridge, that was a national award or a state, it was for the?
It's a national program. It's a national recognition. We're recognized with our, we're number one with regards to medium-sized districts in our state, and that's based on the students that are enrolled. More importantly, it's the percentage of students that pass that college exam. So it's not really based on your enrollment, it's the performance of the students, and that's why they're so impressed with the performance of our district, because our students, not only are they taking college courses in record numbers in St. Lucy County, but they're also passing those tests and earning that college credit, which is critically important for our kids.
And this was for the entire nation? It was a national?
That's correct. It's a national recognition. This is the second time in three years we've won it.
I must have missed part of that, because I would have applauded if I had heard it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Richardson?
I do have something that I want to share today. So I visited Treasure Coast High School, and they gave me a T-shirt, and I want to show it off. It says, "Be the change you want to see in the world." That's what it said. So I told Mr. Smith I would model this for him tonight. So, Mr. Smith, I did, like I said.
Is he here?
He's not, but I'm doing it anyway. So, be the change you want to see in the world. Even though we are ending the school year, the school year is ending, we are starting a new era next school year. So going into this new era, I just wanted to say some things. And I'm going to take my time about it. Normally, I'm a mile a minute, but today, I'm going to take my time. So I had an eye-opening experience recently. We employed some professionals to do a job. We just assumed that because they are professionals, they do not need directions. This was not their first barbecue. So we gave instructions. The question was, or the instruction was, this is where we are? This is where we want to be? Can you get us there? The answer was yes. So we moved on to other hurdles yet before us. We had a lot on our plates, and we thought that we were being very 101 with our expectations. How you got the job done was entirely up to you. You're the professionals. I did not want to tell anyone how to do their job. I just needed the end product to be as we discussed. I thought I asked all the questions. I even gave very detailed instructions in writing, could not have been any simpler from where I was standing. Apparently, I did not ask enough questions, or maybe the right questions. Just let me say, I was not given the full picture to make an informed, wise decision. As a result, the end product was nowhere near my expectations. I have determined within myself that I'm going to be even more intentional about how I ask questions and the answers that I get. I'm going to ask as many questions as it takes for me to be satisfied beyond a shadow of doubt that the end result is as expected. It may not pass muster, as I have only one vote. However, I will be satisfied at the end of the day that I did my part. At the end of the day, I have no one to blame except myself for the end product, because I did not ask the right questions, or I was not involved as I should have been, because I'm trying to be politically correct. Hindsight, my grandmother says, is 2020. She says, "No question is a stupid question," and I'm going to take her up on that. So I say all of this to say that I'm to our staff here, you are probably going to get tired of me. You are, when you see my number, you're going to say, "Oops, lunchtime," you know, or whatever. But I think it's important that for myself, that I get a picture so that we can make, or I can make, a well-informed decision, and what's in the best interest of our children. As many times as I've sat here, I've always said that my duty, or whatever it is I'm doing, my intent, my agenda, is to make sure that I am making the best decisions for kids. And so going into this new era, you know, be the change you want to see in this world. I am determined that I am going to be that change that I want to see in this world. And so, having said all of that, last weekend also was, I had the privilege of seeing the Treasure Coast High School US Air Force Junior ROTC perform under the command or the instruction of Senior Aerospace Science Instructor, Colonel Retired James D. Golden, Aerospace Science Instructor Chief Retired Jeffrey Barnes, and Aerospace Science Instructor, Master Sergeant Retired Jason Joyce. The cadets exemplified their mission, which is integrity, service before self, and excellence in all they do. I'm going to give special mention to the cadets who were involved. I can't say enough about their level of professionalism and excellence. Commanded by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Rachel Lee. State flag, Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Jaden Behrter. Rifle Guards, Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Nazar Gray. Cadet Major Brianna Bal-Macida. The narrator for the flag folding was Cadet Major Noah Ojida. And our videographer was Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Colby Santos. I will be, we will be, they, I can't say enough about the level of excellence that these color guard performed at. And I think that we should all be very proud, I am proud, to say that this is, they are a product of the St. Lucy County Public Schools. So to Mr., the principal, Tom Smith, to our commander, and to the children, I say, "Job well done," and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. My reports, I went to a play in our district. I heard, I think it was Mr. Ingasol mentioning the play he went to and how phenomenal it was. Well, I went to a play at River Edge. The principal happens to be Ms. Ingasol, the wife of Mr. Ingasol. These were 5th graders. The play was called Annie. These 5th graders were incredible. I mean, this was professionalism at its best with 5th graders. No wonder we've won the Cambridge Award. No wonder we have our 99% comprehensive graduations. We are doing an excellent job. And when I say "we" is because I think somebody up here said, or somebody said, "I'm part of the family, Ms. Buchanan, I'm part of the family," so I can include myself. And Ms. Richardson, guess what? I have one of those T-shirts, too.
Oh, no!
Yes, yes, yes. My husband made, Mr. Smith, give us one. But we also traveled this month quite a bit. Thank you, Dr. Wowes, for opening that door and making those appointments. But my husband and I, we went to every high school to sit and observe the African-American history studies. And boy, oh, boy, we have an excellent program going on in St. Lucy County Public Schools. As I sat there and observed these incredible instructors, they gave excellent history of the African-American in this country. And in that history, it was the history of so many others. Whites that gave their lives to make sure that people were treated justly in this country. Blacks who risked their lives, and who made, people who made incredible accomplishments in spite of what this country did to the African-American when they brought them over here. And these instructors did an excellent job talking about the whole history. We went through how there were white, young students from college, college students, who went door-to-door in the black community and white community to get people to vote, and how they traveled, whites and blacks, from one end of the South to the other end of the South, on buses for civil rights, and how they stood and sat at these counters and refused to any longer put up with what was going on. We have an excellent program here in this county, and it's about time that we are doing this at every high school. And so that was how I ended up getting a T-shirt, going to Treasure Coast. But I think the only one high school we didn't attend was Fort Pierce Central, because you do yours in a semester, I think, something like that. But the rest of the schools, all year long, they're teaching this curriculum, and it's very enriching. And the students, the students, you can really, they participated. You can hear a pen drop. They were very participant, very excited. And there was a mixture of students. There were Hispanic students in the classrooms, there were white students in the classroom, there were black students in the classroom. There was a mixture of students learning about the history of the African-American in this country. So that was very enriching, this. And again, Dr. Wowes set up the appointments for me to attend, and so, thank you so much. And then, last but not least, the Education Foundation had their scholarship award night. And we had it at Fort Pierce Central. Ms. Buchanan was our host, the master of ceremonies. And this is the annual scholarship foundation that the Education Foundation has each year. This year, they awarded 60 scholarships funded by 20 donors that totaled $58,000 was given out in scholarships by this community nonprofit organization. So they've partnership to help us help our students, and we thank you, Education Foundation, for all of the work that you do for public school education. Okay, we've had our comments for the night, board. We now have scheduled speakers. We are going to ask Susan Sedeno, if you would please come first. And as always, please give your name and your address, and you have five minutes, Ms. Susan, and our attorney will let you know when this up.
Okay. My name is Susan Sedeno, resident of Port St. Lucy. Good evening, board members, Dr. Mills, Dr. Prince. I do have to say that as a resident of Port St. Lucy for quite a few years, I am really proud of what I see being accomplished in our school district. I really do. From when I moved here a long time ago to now, it's actually remarkable. I'm here again, and I'm not going away until we resolve the issues with the books. At this point, I feel we're getting the runaround about the processes and the protocols to get the books removed. I do not understand why. We've already provided all enough information that the books are pornographic and they violate Florida statutes and sunshine law 847.0133. A person may not knowingly sell, rent, loan, give away, distribute, transmit, or show any obscene material to a minor, that's anyone under the age of 18. Obscene means the status of material which is the average person applying contemporary community standards would find taken as a whole appeals to the puritan interest, depicts or describes in a patently offensive way sexual conduct as specifically defined herein, and taken as a whole lacks seriously literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. A violation of the provisions of this section constitute a felony of the third degree, punishable as provided in Statute 775.082 and 083. The key word is knowingly. Since we've brought this up in front of the board more times than I can remember, that would make it knowingly, right? Not to worry, though, I am not going, I am going to save myself and the grandchildren and children who may be watching this live at home from the embarrassment of reading any quotes from these books. We have heard them one too many times, so when do we act? There are some who think that the answer is homeschooling. I disagree. Although this is a very viable option for some families, it leaves out more than 56% of households where parents must work, and that is not taking into consideration the 79% of households headed by single mothers. How can these families survive if they have to stay home and homeschool their children? Who will provide for them to survive? The answer to the problem is not to take the children out of the schools. The answer to the problem is to fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Dale, would you please come forward? You're the next speaker. Ms. Gail Galliano, you also have the five minutes, as you know.
Thank you, Dale Galliano, St. Lucy County. Proverbs 22:6, "Train up a child in a way he should go; even when he is old, he will not depart from it." Things are booming in St. Lucy County, and St. Lucy Schools being the largest employer with 4,800-plus employees, of which 2,790 are teachers. Everybody on a little bit on the payroll's dole here. Now, if you do the math, that's 186 teachers for each of the 15 books under Challenge According to Policy. From what I understand, they have all been read, but now are on a holding pattern. Here are some other interesting numbers, 147. Here are some other interesting numbers, 147. That's the day since the first Challenge book was submitted, far greater than the policy said for completion. I've been here since the first day of school, August 10, 2021. 273 days, eight months, and 28 days. That's today. With everything, it should have been more than 30, 60 days from the beginning that these books should have been dealt with. We've been trying to get your attention with these illegal books, and I think we've accomplished that, coming to every meeting, informing you of what's going on, working the curve of old policy, retirements, new hires, holidays, coming elections, Tallahassee decisions. An entire school year has passed come June 1, and only five books have been removed. Now they were done. And what about the rest? Do you not find it strange that nothing has been done with the remaining 15 books at this time? I mean, nothing, the first five, bang, bang, done. Everything came to a screeching halt. Well, I find it strange, too. But come to find out, hmm. After all this time, all the questions, all the paperwork, the meetings, the work, the frustration, each month, we were never told the proper procedures to get the remaining books finalized or for removal. Call me surprised. So, in a way, it was and is all truly and totally a lie through the omission of the department. Why? Who knows? Now, you say you have to wait for the state to come down with their new criteria. Like, seriously? I can tell you right now with great assurance and certainty that nowhere in the changes coming down will it say that illegal statutes in our Florida law and constitution on pornography regarding our schools will be have any changes. The Florida Sunshine Law 847.001 of 2018 defining child pornography will not be edited to read anything other than what it is now. You can bet the farm that incest, rape, masturbation, sexual conduct, bestiality, sodomy, drugs, and all the other deviant, sick stuff that is in those 15 books will still be high up on the illegal list. So since you never got all the information that I thought you were getting, seriously, when we turned all that stuff in, I honestly thought that everybody here was getting it. You do now, as of tonight. These books, you can now get these books removed and put in their proper place. Illegal is illegal, wrong is wrong. And all you do, work sessions, research, budgets, school trips, photo ops, you name it, it's time to say, "No illegal books in our schools," and make it so. 2 Corinthians 5:10, "We must all appear before the judgment seat of Christ so that each of us may receive what is due to us for the things done in the body, whether good or bad." Again, I ask, how will you answer?
Okay, at this time, with all heads clear, we are going to be adjourned. We are adjourned.